This segment for Henderson Ward Three City Council. We have here represented two candidates, Aaron Hale and Bruce Cutler could not make it. He does work on Saturdays. And so his wife Louise Cutler is here. Per the rules of this forum, she will be allowed to make a two-minute statement and then she will very politely be excused and we will direct all our questions to Ms. Lael. Okay? And so Ms. Cutler.
Hello. Thank you for asking Bruce to be here today. I'm sorry that he works on Saturday. I'm sure he would have really enjoyed to be here to answer all the questions. And I'm just gonna say a couple things.
Could you please talk into the microphone?
Sure. We've lived here for 21 years. He feels that it's time for some changes in Henderson, just like the mayor, you know, candidates also said it was time for a change. He would like to be considered and hope that, you know, you could go with no endorsement for today.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, there's no questions at this segment. And so you...
She's even. I just wanna know what party she is. What party is your husband?
Well, he's registered presently as a Republican.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Trying to state the rules is all we're trying to do. So, thank you very much for coming. Thank you. We'd like to thank our panelists for being here and also the candidate. We respect your time and we're very grateful that you're here. So, Ms. Lael.
Thank you.
According to the rules, we're going to allow you 30 seconds to make your statement. And even though there aren't any other panelists, we wanna be fair to everybody and be with the rules. So, I will cut you off by saying thank you when your time is up and we would hope that you'd respect that and it's not 'cause I don't like ya, 'cause, you know, I have nothing against you, but we're just trying to stick to all the rules. So, you have 30 seconds to make your opening statement, Ms. Lael.
Hi, I am Aaron Lael and I think that you should vote for me because I have a plan to improve the local economy. This is a three-point plan. Firstly, no work cards required. Work cards are a barrier to employment. Secondly, we are going to have no taxes on any startup business in their first three years. The first three years is the crucial time for a new business to succeed. And thirdly, fill empty commercial districts. I would like to repeat the success that I had at City Lights Artists Co-op in helping to revitalize Water Street and do the same for other abandoned shopping areas.
Thank you very much. So, now we'll start with our panelists. Panelists, we can certainly ask the questions. It's a little different because we have one person here and so we have a little more time for follow-up questions especially. So, Mr. George Asad, if you could give the first question.
What party are you?
I am currently registered Republican.
And the question is this. Asked it of the last panel, so I think it's only fair I'd probably follow up with you. How do you feel about public sector employees? Should they be able to be part of a union or do you believe in the right-to-work state?
So, Ms. Lael.
Nevada is a right-to-work state and that is state law. And as you know, the city has to obey state law. However, I also believe that people have a right to organize as far as freedom of assembly and freedom of association. And those are natural rights. Those rights do not imply that anyone has a right to any tax money, however. So, I do believe they have a right to organize, but we as a city have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible. So, we have to do what's best for the city as a whole.
Thank you very much. Mr. Asad, are you done?
Yes.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Ms. Karen Steele?
I'd like to pass without a reserve right to redirect.
Thank you very much. Ms. Melanie Howard?
Good afternoon, Ms. Lael. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
My question to you, you mentioned something about filling commercial space. How would you go about doing that?
Well, as you know, the city has several city-owned properties. And when I was in the... When I was the founding chairman of City Lights Artists Co-op, what we did is we worked with the Henderson Redevelopment Agency with an abandoned city-owned property that had been empty and boarded up since the 70s. And we moved a nonprofit art gallery in there. That drew foot traffic to the area and it drew other businesses and it filled up that whole section of Water Street with businesses. And I would like to repeat that success by moving in some nonprofits and some other types of events such as a farmer's market into some city-owned properties. For example, the farmer's market currently takes place in a parking lot. When it rains, they lose business. The city owns an empty restaurant space on the ground floor of a city-owned building.
Thank you very much. That's kind.
Okay, can I...
You can do a follow-up question.
I would like to, thank you. One of the candidates in a previous interview mentioned that Water Street is basically abandoned at this point. So, I guess I'm a little confused when you mention that it's full of business and when somebody prior said that it is not. So, can you maybe elaborate on that?
Now, the north part of Water Street does have businesses in those buildings, which were the... That entire section of Water Street had been boarded up after the Pepcon explosion and no one had been using that for decades. So, we moved that gallery in there and it was so successful at drawing businesses that it had to move to a side street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go now to Mr. Forrest Darby.
Yes. How many people are there in your race? How many opponents do you have? And what are their names?
Yes, I have three opponents. Mr. Cutler, whose wife just spoke. There is Milt Doyle, who I have not met. And then, of course, there is the incumbent John Mars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Lauer?
If you get elected, would you investigate the current scandal related to the land purchase?
I believe they're already investigating, but yes, I would have been skeptical of that deal.
Would you have voted for it?
I would not have voted for it. The... I would have been skeptical of that deal from the very beginning due to the long history of similar failed projects. Sports Stadium is something that has been bandied about in many locations over the years and it has... There's always been something that has caused such projects to not come to fruition, so I would have looked at that very carefully.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Travis Barrick?
Hi, Ms. Lael. How are you today?
I'm doing great. How about you?
I'm reasonably well. What is your role as a city councilman to guarantee the civil rights of the members of the citizens of Henderson and specifically to monitor the behavior of the Henderson Police Department?
Well, as you know, the city council doesn't directly control the police department, but what the city council does is hires the city manager and city attorney and sets the budget. So, the city has that particular avenue of control. And, you know, as far as maintaining and protecting the rights of the citizens, I am very much concerned with doing that and I would do everything that I could.
Can I follow up?
You can. And I would like a follow-up as well.
Would you have voted to fire Judda Chalmers?
I don't believe she was fired. I believe she resigned, didn't she?
If it came to a vote, would you have fired her?
Based on the information that I read in the newspaper, which is not the same information that everyone who was inside that investigation would have had access to, it seemed to me that it was not directly a failure of the policies that she set. However, as the leader of the organization, she's responsible for the organization, just like the captain of a ship is responsible for what happens on a ship. And so, yes, I would have held her accountable for what happened under her command because she sets the tone. The leader of any organization sets the tone. And it was up to her to...
Thank you very much. Would you like a follow-up question or would you like her to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. My follow-up question has exactly to do with that. You were correct when you said that, you know, it's the city manager that's in charge in the police. However, as a city council person, you would have the power to ask for any kind of investigation through the Attorney General. If you do not approve of what the city manager and their decision is, you can put it on agenda and you can in fact have a referral to the Attorney General for an investigation. Would you use that? How would you use that to, you know, in connection with Mr. Barrick's question, to hold people accountable?
Yes, when there is an event that's happened that is completely unacceptable, yes, I would call for an investigation if it was not being investigated.
Is that good, Mr. Barrick?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Richard Churchill?
Thank you, Ms. Lael, for coming in. Let me ask you a question first. In Henderson, the council elections, are they specific ward or at-large?
These are at-large elections. I have to live in the ward that I represent, which is the Green Valley area.
Okay. Then, understanding that, what would you favor? Do you favor at-large, where people who very... Could very likely not live within your ward either elect you or not get you elected? Or would you prefer as a representative, because that's your job to represent those people within your ward that you live, would you prefer to have specific ward voting where you're answerable only to those people and those people would be the only ones voting you in or out?
Well, it would certainly be easier for me as a candidate if I only had to contact a quarter of the city instead of the entire city. However, the city council's decisions do affect the entire city. So, as far as what I would prefer as a candidate, I would prefer to, you know, represent the people in the area that I live in, simply because I know the area. But as a responsibility to the entire city, the city council does have a responsibility to the entire city, including areas other than where I live. So, I would, you know, as far as once I am actually making decisions on the city council, yes, I would have to take into account how things affect the entire city. So, yes, the entire city should be able to vote because there are only four wards.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there any follow-up that you'd like to do or would you like her to continue on with her answer?
No, that was fine. I understand her position. The second question, if you're familiar with consolidated tax. C-tax issue is a very hot item right now. Some of the municipalities in the valley aren't getting supposedly their fair share of this pie. If you're familiar enough with the consolidated tax issue, which is very complicated, so that's fine. But if you have some knowledge of it, do you think that it's fair, the way the structure is set up for not just Henderson, but for the surrounding municipalities?
Well, as you said, it is a very complicated issue. And these are things that I would want to examine one by one, not the entire thing, but each particular issue and how each local government deals with each particular issue within the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Byron Brooks?
Hi, how's it going?
Well, yeah, it's going.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but if it's due to time, then we'll just go with one or two. My first question is this. Do you feel at all that your spiritual ideologies may prevent you from working closely with others on the council or with the offices of the city in Henderson?
No.
Okay. And then, how, you know, there's... You've talked about micro-businesses before.
Yes.
And so, what I'm wondering is, how do you see, you know, starting or allowing those that want to start their micro-business in Henderson and developing that within the city?
Well, I think that micro-business is a great thing for the city. It's a proven model for helping people lift themselves up by the bootstraps, reducing poverty and unemployment. And I would like to see less poverty and unemployment.
Okay. Can I congratulate you for having the most succinct answer of the entire day so far? Okay. Mr. Andre Haynes?
Thank you for coming. The business deal that the city of Henderson did with Malam.
Yeah.
Taking into consideration his past, being sued by the former owner of the Hard Rock Hotel and other failed business deals, would you have voted to do business with him considering his past?
No, I would not.
That's the second. What's amazing here is a yes or no answer was asked and a yes or no answer was given. I mean, for a political race, this is unprecedented. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Jason Brooks?
All right, I'll try and ask a more in-depth question.
Okay, I'll try. Give you a longer answer.
If a train... No. Aaron, obviously Henderson Ward Three is the Green Valley area, which is where I live. My brother lives there as well, so you'd be representing, you know, me and... Gotta help you with that one. But my biggest question for Henderson, you know, a lot of the people who come up to try and run are talking about fiscal conservatism. And I ask this with everybody who comes up here, is what are you gonna bring to the table as a fiscal conservative that's actually going to help budget and manage the money for the city of Henderson? Of course, you're representing Ward Three, but as you stated before, when you're sitting on the city council, you know, board, you're representing the whole city. The whole city needs some serious help. So, what are some of the action plans that you are going to put in place if you go in representing Ward Three on the city council?
Well, what I would like to do is I would like to create a formal system for empowering city employees to identify ways to increase efficiency and save money. And of course, I would always be on the alert for ways to save money. I would be a reliable vote for saving money. I'm an expert on frugality, the author of a book on saving money. And I believe that I can bring a unique perspective as a skinflint, as someone who is frugal in my personal life as well as my business life, to keep a lookout for ways to save money and improve efficiency for the city. And also, of course, increasing the economic growth in the city would also increase city revenues. That is a direct relationship between property values and city revenues. So, if we could get the economy moving, we could get the city budget back up too.
Thank you very much. Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. Any follow-up questions by the panel? We'll start with Ms. Steele.
I have heard you speak before and I've heard you make some pretty bold statements about your ideals. And they seem to be in direct conflict with the entrenched philosophical ideals that are currently practiced in all political arenas. And we're hearing... Oh, I'm hearing you say the same things that all candidates say. I'm going to and I'm gonna be better and I'm gonna be stronger and I'm gonna be faster. So, what can you say to me that's going to give me confidence in your ability to break out of the political mold and actually do something good for the citizens?
Well, as you know, since you have spoken with me before, I'm not an insider. So, I'm just a regular person that understands the struggles of everyday people. I would always have the people of Henderson in mind. And I do have some experience in working with a small board, a small group of people to reach a consensus about things that I would like to see done and get them done. I was a member of the Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health Advisory Board. And while I was on the board, you know, the board is made up of a number of different representatives from different groups. And, you know, there's medical doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists, nurse, social workers. And every one of these groups has a pocketbook issue to disagree with everybody else on the board. So, getting them all to agree with each other, it takes some talent.
Thank you very much. Did you want to ask a follow-up or hello? Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I believe he put his hand... Mr. Lauer put his hand up first, so... No? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, Melanie. Let's go with Melanie, then we'll go to Mr. Darby.
I'd like to follow up with Karen's question, Ms. Lael. I mean, she basically stated that your ideals are different than what is current and you will only have one vote out of five. So, how would you be able... How would you attempt to build bridges rather than maybe...
With the devil.
Blowing it up?
The same way that I did on the advisory board, which is to logically explain my position and find common ground between everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Darby?
One thing you said caught my ear. I knew that Henderson had specific geographical boundaries. You'll be representing... You must live in Ward Three.
Yes.
I thought you only ran from Ward Three, so I learned something when Richard asked his question. I personally disagree with the idea of running for all of Henderson. And I'd like you to comment on this for this reason. Whenever you enlarge your district politically, you make it easier for the person with the most money to win because of the mailers, the this, the that. So, what happens is generally, it is very helpful to the person with the most money when you run all over Henderson. I'd like you to comment on that.
Well, yeah, that's very true. And the person with the most money is not me, so... So, yeah, I have seen that it is, you know, it is obviously more challenging when you're working with a strict budget to contact four times as many people. But that's a matter of my inconvenience, not necessarily what's best for the people of Henderson. So, you know, as I said before, once I was on the city council, assuming that I win, I would be making decisions that would affect everybody.
One quick follow-up?
Yes.
The other thing why I think it's better to run from a specific area is the people in that area know the... Will know the candidates better than someone living clear across town. Maybe you were involved in the girl school, you were this, that. They'll know the candidates better, so they'll be able to make a better judgment. And anyway, we just disagree on that issue.
Thank you. Oh, did you want her to respond to that or was that a statement? Okay. Because it didn't sound like a question. Okay, Ms. Lael, please respond.
Okay, yeah, I do agree that, you know, people in my area know me better. You know, my neighbors, their kids have been in my pool and I can call their dogs. So, yeah, I know the people in my area pretty well. And they know me. But as I said before, the decisions the city council makes do affect everybody. So, I would have to, as a council person, if I win, as a council person, I would have to keep in mind the good of the entire city.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are two more people that have said they want follow-ups and now a third. So, we'll go around. Mr. Barrick?
Ms. Lael, what is the largest internal impediment, meaning within Henderson, not the broader economy? What's the largest internal impediment to getting the economy of Henderson going?
The largest one that's just about the city of Henderson, you mean? I would think that that is the barrier to starting a micro-business. Because a micro-business, as you know, is a business that can be started for under $200. And these are businesses that can be started as a home business or a second income, but they can also be started by people who are poor, people who are unemployed and who really need to have a business or job. And if we set the license bar too high as far as how much money it takes to start a business, we cut out the opportunities for our poorest citizens.
Can I summarize her answer?
Yes.
The largest internal impediment to expanding the economy in Henderson is the city of Henderson.
Well, if you're gonna say that, I'm gonna allow her to respond to that, whether that is truly what you meant to say, Ms. Lael.
Well, of course, the national economy has a huge impact here, but I look for ways that I could help as a city council person if I win. And that is one way that I could affect the economy in our local area. Obviously, as a city council person, I couldn't affect the national economy, but I could do that one thing that would help the local economy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Haynes?
Can you describe one thing that you have learned while working with mental health services and how that would serve you if elected to represent Ward Three?
Oh, yes, absolutely. The biggest thing that I learned is that when I'm proposing something to a small group of people, the most important thing that I can explain is how it will affect the dollars and cents issues, the bottom line. And if I come to... If I came to the board or if I come to the council with an analysis of how any proposal that I bring to them would affect the budget and revenues, speaking the language of math and dollars and cents is the best way to show people that the issue is serious and solvable.
Ten seconds. Oh, I guess we're done. Mr. Asad?
Yes, thank you.
Please use the microphone.
Thank you, Ms. Lael, for being here today. It's very difficult being the only one up there, I'm sure, but you're doing great.
Thank you.
My... You have just won the city council race. You're on the council now. I'm gonna pose a hypothetical to you. In light of the Connecticut shootings at Newtown, public officials, elected officials, will usually want to react with a new ordinance or new bill or new law. The council members that you work with have voted three to three. You're gonna be the tie-breaking vote on this ordinance. The ordinance requires universal background checks for any citizen in Henderson buying a weapon, firearm, semi-automatic, a rifle, semi-automatic rifle, shotgun. They're also gonna require a magazine limit, 10 rounds in a magazine, no more. And they're going to basically ban assault rifles, semi-assault rifles. You're the tie-breaking vote. How would you vote and why?
Well, my vote is no, because number one, the city as a representative of government should be bound by all the laws that bind government. And the law that binds the government is, at the national level, is our constitution. That's our rules for how government should operate at all levels. And that says the right to bear arms... And that says the right to bear arms should not be infringed. Period.
Thank you very much. If there's no more, I just have one follow-up question as the moderator. Do you make it a habit of answering simple yes or no questions with a simple yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, I am not your typical politician.
Well, that's funny, because I asked that as a yes or no question, and you didn't, but you said yes. So, I thought that was... Thank you very much, Ms. Lael. You've been a joy to be here. Thank you to the panel. And we are going to start in...
Closing statement?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Yes, you have a 30-second closing statement, Ms. Lael.
Well, I would just like to thank you for providing this opportunity for the citizens to find out what people that they are going to be voting for or against might think and how they would affect their lives. You're doing an excellent service for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're making it a habit of starting on time and finishing on time, out of respect for everybody's time. And so, we will be starting sharp by my watch. My watch says 3:37 and 18 seconds right now.